Action.
Good evening, the December 5th meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people who stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent and excused. Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Before we begin our meeting tonight, I want to recognize a special member of our Planning Commission, that's Bruce Robinson, and tonight is his last night as a Planning Commissioner. Bruce has served Lincoln City faithfully as a Planning Commissioner since 2013, and has helped the city successfully tackle many planning challenges in the process. And I know that housing, affordable housing, and workforce housing has been one of your special interests, and I hope you're pleased, we've made some progress on that this year, and it looks like we'll be in shape to do a lot more this coming year. Thank you, Bruce. Bruce served as Chair of the Commission for two years, and as a member of the Commission at that time, I appreciated the way Bruce chaired our meetings, and how he brought us together to make the decisions we needed to make. Bruce was also a very good listener, and very respectful of everyone who testified before the Commission. And Bruce has been generous with his time, helping new Commissioners and new Chairs learn the ropes. Thank you, Bruce, from all of us. And I bet you already have plans for how you, what you're gonna do on your first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Probably I'm gonna be butchering wood, drilling holes and things, and carving stuff up. But, thank you for that wonderful accolade, Steve. I've very much appreciated being on this Planning Commission, working with all of you, and with Richard, and Deborah, and Kate, and the entire staff. You guys have been wonderful to work with, and certainly, I think, the little bit of it that I'm leaving, I'm leaving in capable hands. Thanks again, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
All right, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes, there is one slight correction that I noticed, and Doug Bryson was not at our last meeting, so that needs to be corrected. So with that correction being made, is there a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on November 21st?
I move to approve the minutes of November 21st with the correction to Doug Bryson attendance issue.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Now's our public comment time, would anybody like to make public comments? No, all right. Oh, we do. Oh, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Deborah Marks, I'm the Senior Planner, and I just want to introduce Jeannie Sprague, who is our new Parks and Recreation Director, and I want to say how pleased I personally am that she's here. When, our previous Parks and Recreation Director left in 2010, and that was a time when there was a downturn in the economy, and the city manager decided that rather than filling that expensive position then, that Lila Bradley would take over the parks maintenance, I would take over parks planning, and then Gail Kimberling would take over the Recreation Center. And so that's been going on for a number of years. When we did our Parks and Recreation Master Plan update this past year, one of the things that we all supported was hiring a full-time director, and now we have one. So, she's here tonight just to introduce herself, and tell you a little bit about herself, I guess, and what you're planning to do.
I will keep it short. My name is Jeannie, hi, everyone. I look forward to working with you a lot, so thanks for letting me take a second to introduce myself. I've been here a month, the Lincoln City has been fantastic, been doing a lot with recreation and parks. A lot of my focus has been on parks, though, and looking at parks properties, projects, looking at priority, and putting together, back together, the Parks Board, and we're gonna be meeting in a couple of weeks. In fact, Bruce, if you're leaving them, why don't you come join us over at the Parks Board? We have three spots available.
I saw that in the newspaper.
Did you? All right. So, just really looking forward to working with you all. I've been in Portland since 95, I'm originally East Coaster, grew up in Virginia, and I've been with Portland Parks and Recreation since 99, so did a lot of parks work. If you know of Peninsula Park out there, the beautiful Test Rose Garden, that's the last center and park I supervise, so. Thanks for listening, and I've met a few of you already, and I hope to connect with you each even more.
Welcome, and you have a great job with a lot of potential, you're gonna have fun.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I'm excited, thank you.
All right, new business, the year-end review.
Um, yeah. I believe you had in your packet, uh, materials about the year-end review, things that have been accomplished in the past year. I can just run through it quickly, and actually, while we go through this, we'd be interested in getting your feedback on how things went, what was hard, what was easy, what could have been done better, what was done right, those sorts of things, if you have any insight you can give. Bruce, Bruce, you can do it without fear of retribution.
I don't know, I have neighbors.
My dog refuses to go down by your house anymore, so it's just not an issue. One of the, of course, one of the big things we did in the past year was vacation rental dwellings, I think, for the most part, that's all now behind us. There was the cap put on VRDs in the R-1-5 Zone, 10% of the lots in the R-1-5 Zone could have VRD, full-time VRDs, and the number that the cap is at right now is 190, and I believe we have 188 VRDs either with land use approval, or with land use approval pending. We expect with renewals start next month, that we will lose a few, it happens normally, so there should be a little bit more room under the cap next year, but right now, we're pretty close to the cap on the R-1-5 Zone. Other, um, other than the 190 full-time, anybody could get a 30-night per year vacation rental dwelling in the R-1-5 Zone, and also in other zones in the city where otherwise the VRDs are prohibited, full-time VRDs are prohibited. We, also, was a cap put on VRDs in Rhodes End, also at 10% of the number of lots, which is, there's 900 lots zoned for residential use in Rhodes End, so the cap is 90, right now, there's over 200 VRDs in Rhodes End. Those, for the next seven years, those will be able to be transferred freely and operated freely, and then, after the seven years runs, they will be subject to whatever rules are in place at that time, so presumably, the number of VRDs in Rhodes End will, full-time VRDs in Rhodes End will gradually begin to drop. Yes, ma'am?
How many over 200 are there now? What is the number in Rhodes End?
Say, two, around 230, something like 230? I think something like that.
Thank you.
There was a bit of a rush to get in under the wire, because the ordinance went into effect on the 22nd of the last month, so the people applied to get their rights. There've been a number of zoning ordinance amendments considered, Bruce, did you, could you speak into the microphone?
Do you want to get feedback on each of these individual as you go through them?
Anytime.
I had a couple of points about the VRD thing. I think it was core to everything I've been involved in for the whole five years I've been on this Commission, I've been about VRDs, and these ordinances were sort of the icing on the cake, if you will. I think it's, for new Commissioners, might be interesting to note, you'll get, hopefully you'll get into something as gnarly and nasty as VRDs was, and be able to see it through to this conclusion. I think the City Council did a wonderful job carrying forward from all the work we all did, and all the work, all the planning and work sessions and so forth. This is, the VRD thing is probably the hardest thing we've done in all of those years. And the second thing about this, the Rhodes End Improvement Association and the other neighborhood associations, the value that those associations bring to the table when they formulate opinions and come to us, Commissioners, with a fairly settled set of notions, we don't have to talk to everybody in the neighborhood. I was very appreciative of, particularly Deanna Hinton, the work she put into formulating that opinion and helping the Commission get through it. Thank you.
Thanks. We had several code and comprehensive plan amendments considered, one was relating to temporary uses. The impetus for that was the eclipse in August, and concern that there would be a need to allow some things that ordinarily aren't allowed. The City Council ultimately decided not to adopt those changes, and so that was not approved. One thing that was approved was the allowing indoor theaters in the general commercial zone, and let's see, we had Transportation System Plan Ordinance Amendments, it was earlier in the year, was it the year before we did, we adopted Transportation System Plan?
Oh, that is, you must think.
The year before. But, so we had the plan, but then they were implementing ordinance changes that were needed, and some of those had been adopted before, but the final ones were adopted in the, in this current year, and in particular, defining transportation uses and allowing transportation uses in all zones. Previously, that had not been called out, it was just sort of assumed that they were allowed, and that, but the Oregon Department of Transportation wanted that change, so to make it clear that they were allowed. And also, one of the big things was addressing deferred improvement agreements. That's, when someone develops property in the city, ordinarily, they're required to put in curb gutter, sidewalk, and half-street improvements. Often, rather than have those things just be designed, so you have like a 50-foot-long piece of sidewalk, or gutter, or whatever, that's not connected to anything, and that may not properly connect when adjacent properties are built on. The idea is, we would allow that to be deferred, property owners would sign a deferred improvement agreement, saying that when the time came, they would either pay for or install those improvements. They rarely were ever called in, and the, the Commission recommended to the City Council, and the City Council adopted a provision that they could pay a fee in lieu of the improvements, and then not be, not be subject to further payments. It was a particular concern, property might be transferred several times, and people may not realize they had been on the hook for, you know, tens of thousands of dollars potentially, so this was felt to be a good solution to that problem.
Richard, is it too early to see how that is playing out, in terms of, has anybody opted for that option?
I can't tell you that, I don't know. I don't know. Most of the development that we're seeing is infill in subdivisions that already have the improvements in place. Olivia Beach, Bayview.
Palisade.
Lincoln Palisade, yeah. Another vacation rental dwelling matter you considered was the idea of expiration of land use approvals. If people got land use approval but didn't get a license, or didn't renew their license, the idea is that then those land use approvals would become void. The idea behind that is so that when we're operating under the cap, that approvals that aren't being used don't tie up the numbers of VRDs that are allowed, and that was adopted. There was a minor amendment relating to chickens, domestic fowl. We've gotten a complaint about chicken coops being allowed right up against the property line, the recommendation from the Commission was to require a setback, and the Council adopted that, requiring a 10-foot separation from the property line, and also from any dwelling except the property owner's own dwelling. And then we also updated on enforcement and inspections procedures. Zone changes, the big zone change was zoning Rhodes End into a new zone, the R-1-R-E Zone. As Bruce mentioned, we got, I've gotten a lot of input from the Rhodes End Improvement Association, and we took that into the form of a new zone for the city, at hearings, and I had recommended some changes to it, some were approved, some not, and ultimately, the ordinance was adopted. So it affected actually over 900 lots, because there were 900 residential lots, so put in the new zone, but there also were the state park lots, and the county park lot that were put into the park zone, the city's park zone. The, in March, you all did hearings on the Parks and Recreation System Plan, and recommended approval on that, and the Council adopted it, and then the Council also, as Deb mentioned, had budgeted for a new Parks and Recreation Director, who you have here tonight, and be working on implementing the new plan in the coming year. And, let's see, we also had the Economic Opportunity Analysis, Housing Needs Assessment, and Beautiful Lands Inventory. These things are directed primarily at our new comprehensive plan that we'll be working on, or are working on, and will be working on next year. The Housing Needs Assessment also is particularly useful for looking at our issues relating to affordable housing, workforce housing. There's a lot of good information in those, and the Council adopted the assessments, and also adopted new comprehensive plan policies. We also had the Nelskot Gap Neighborhood Plan, that we had gotten a grant from the State's Transportation and Growth Management Program to develop a new plan for the area, given that the improvements that the Oregon Department of Transportation built on Highway 101 through the Nelskot Gap, it was felt it was a good time to develop a plan for that area, because it was likely that that would tend to stimulate some building and subdivision in that area. There were a lot of outreach to stakeholders and the public, public hearings, and then the plan has in fact been adopted, after your recommendation to the City Council, and then in the, in 2018, we'll be looking at bringing forward some ordinance changes to adopt, to reflect the new plan. And, let's see, we're also have, of course, the Imagine Lincoln City Visioning Program. We've had a lot of public outreach on that, we had a, we've attended a number of events in the city to get input from people, but we also had an online survey, that we had hundreds of people responded to, we got thousands of ideas from that. We had a, an open house last month, that hundreds of people also attended, that would help from a lot of you, that was, I think it was really, really successful. Based on that, and other input we've gotten, a new online survey is coming up, it's either online now, or will be tomorrow, I think, to sort of fine-tune and narrow down some of the ideas, and see which ones are the most popular, are the most highly regarded, and that will inform the basis for our, the actual vision that we develop next year. And Commissioner Griffiths was on the Steering Committee, and Commissioner Crowen serves on the Project Management Team, so we've had involvement from you all, of course, and a number of you volunteered, as I said, at the, at the open house, which was wonderful. Right now, we're working on the Villages at Cascadehead, revising the preliminary master plan for the property. We expect to have a draft, a new draft of the plan, maybe this month, or early, early next year, and that will be coming back to the Commission for review, and potentially for adoption, if that's what you choose to do.
Have you changed the name yet?
Sorry?
Have you changed the name yet?
Well, I was, actually, I was gonna mention that we will most likely change the name, I've toyed with the idea of a contest, but you end up with names like Lincoln City, or something, so. So, but yeah, I think there's consensus around a name change, because it's not Villages, and it's not a Cascadehead, so.
If any of you have any ideas.
I think we have one on the board already, right, Patty?
Yes.
What is it?
Wakoma Woods.
I like that.
Yeah, let's see.
There's been a contest among the Planning Commissioners, and we're, majority like it.
We've also had a lot of building activity. I've mentioned before, that before the boom in the early 2000s, we were, we would see anywhere from 40 to 60 new homes started each year. During the boom, it got up to, there were a couple of years where it was 140, 140 or more. After the boom, when the collapse came, we had years where, I think it was below 20 for several years. Last year was around 60, so far this year, we're at 80, so we're seeing a lot of building activity on that.
Is the ratio of duplexes increasing?
Um, we're starting, we're seeing some duplexes, I think in past years, we've had like none, yeah, I think, how many we had this year? Two or three?
At least three.
At least three, so. They did, they approved a 12-lot subdivision at the north end of Voyage Avenue, adjacent to the, not Villages at Cascadehead property. And, let's see, of course, we had the new office building, retail building across the street, Bruce Polvey built it, and that completed the redevelopment of that lot, of that block, where the Goodwill is, the AT&amp;T store, and now Bruce Polvey's building, so that building has completely, that block has completely redeveloped, which is quite a good thing. The, there used to be a gas station on that site, and actually, it was a superfund site. And a lot of the soil was removed, but also, it was, then they accused, said the best thing to do with the rest is just cap it, and so that's been done, so it's considered a no-further-action site, so we've gone from a, something that really was very blighted to actually, that block has really come along. We've had a mixed-use building at Northeast 28th and 101, it's got a small office space and four apartments, is nearing completion. One of the interesting things about that property is that what we, what we try to do, one of the things we try to do to encourage affordable housing, is when you have mixed use, the, the density cap goes away, and you can have essentially as many units as you can fit, along with the parking and so on. So, they were able to get four apartments in that building, which was a good thing, good use of the property. There had been a very rundown building on the property, and we're able to, they were able to increase the density of uses on that.
I'm curious about the sidewalk in front of it that drops off on both sides. What's up with that? Is, how are, you know, you know what I'm talking about, Deb? I mean, there's a, there's a really nice sidewalk in front of it, but there's no sidewalk on the north end or the south end of that property, so it drops several inches.
There will be, I believe, asphalt, essentially asphalt ramps.
Ramps up to it.
That's an example of what can happen where, if you don't have a plan for the entire block, for example, then you end up with a
Right.
...hanging sidewalk. But, that particular instance is, it is consistent with what's planned for that, the rest of that block, but it will, that will happen when the adjacent properties redevelop. There also is, the pavement needs to be tied into the, to the front of that as well, and that will happen, so. Let's see, we've got a remodel underway, as I'm sure you've seen it, Robie's Furniture down in Cutler City, 30-unit multifamily development approved on West Devils Lake Road, that you all considered an appeal on, from the site plan approval, and denied the appeals, but ended up held the approval. As far as I know, there's been no applications filed for, no building permit application yet on that, so.
And what's the timetable on that?
Good, the approval's good for two years.
Is it normal for them to take so long to go in for a building permit after passing the waiting period for appeals?
It's, it's not surprising, it happens. Some people want to get going as fast as possible, others, you know, they may be considering the weather, and what stage of construction they might be at, at particular times of weather, others is finding Others is financing issues and so it's just, it's really sort of all over the place.
And the number of other projects that they have going on too, I think it's a factor in this case. I think the builder also has some other projects going on at the same time, so might just be timing on his part.
About how long did the amendment or the request to not have it go in take? I mean, you approved it and then there was an appeal, and so there was a big gap of him being able to do any building, right? How long?
There was a gap, but it wasn't that long. It was, because we have to get everything done in a hundred and twenty days from the date of application. So I don't know, probably the, the extra time was, what, thirty to forty-five days, something like that extra that it took because of the appeal.
I was just thinking that could have pushed him into what months he didn't want to build in.
Yeah, it's possible. Yeah. Let's see, we're getting, we approved the site plan to add four rooms to the Coho, the Coho Inn. We're also a renovation of the inn at Lincoln City on the D River. And we've also held a number of pre-application conferences. In the coming year, we have a lot of things coming up, some big things. Got affordable and workforce housing ordinance amendments, amendments to our commercial design standards. We're going to go out soon for a consultant to help us with that. We have, what, five different sets of commercial design standards, so we try to bring coherency to them and, and simplify what we have and also make sure that they result in what it is that we're looking for. Visioning project will complete early next year, and that will then carry us over into the comprehensive plan process. And Villages at Cascade Head property, the preliminary master plan will be finished and considered early next year. And of course, then we have the, starting in the new hospital and new police station, probably start next year or two.
In regard to the comprehensive plan, what time span do you anticipate are taking to deal with all the issues that come up in regard to the comprehensive plan?
I hope it's less than a year.
We also have implementation ordinances to do for the Nelskott Gap Neighborhood Plan.
And some other things we'll be doing in the coming year too, is also revising our ordinance provisions relating to signs. And actually, we're, we're talking about doing a more comprehensive revision of our zoning ordinance in general. It was adopted, I want to say in eighty-four, I think it was, and it's been amended a couple hundred times. And it's, it's kind of a mishmash now, and I would like to leave it as a, as a good coherent, comprehensive, consistent document, so we'll be looking at that as well. So that's what we've done in the last year and what's coming up for next year, in addition to all the, any, any proposals from the, the public wanting conditional use approval, subdivision approval, they can recommend ordinance amendments, so all kinds of things.
Seems like we got a lot done, and in addition to all of this, we had a lot of training as well. What do you think we could have done better or in terms of?
We were going to ask you guys that.
Yeah, you tell me.
What did you?
I think this is a really good commission. I think, you know, you're all very thoughtful and dedicated people. I've, I've seen over the years in, in other jurisdictions, commissions that really end up being rubber stamps or contentious. This just seems like a good group.
Well, it's good to see that the city council adopted many of our recommendations, yeah.
I haven't been here long enough to say what you have done well enough or not. I'm, I'm still very much learning this whole process. I could use some help if you could say how I could improve, maybe that would be helpful for me, but I know some of these other folks who have been here or have been involved in this kind of stuff before probably have it better.
Well, what was the, what was the best thing you've, or what did you feel best about, about what you did this year? Or what did you feel made you most uncomfortable? And were there things that we could have done to?
Sitting here makes me feel uncomfortable, but that's just my stage fright. Yeah, again, I, this is, I'm, I'm a sponge up here right now. I'm just trying to be a participant, but not speak too quickly or put my foot in my mouth.
Gary, please. I kind of felt we did, let's say, the best we possibly could on VRDs because we had pretty much everybody mad at us at times, and so that, that meant we probably took the right ground in it. I feel kind of bad that we didn't make more progress on, on workforce housing. I don't know if the Cascade Head property, you know, getting some property available for it, I, I just, I don't know how we could have done better, but I, I don't feel good about the fact that we really didn't make much progress on, on getting things made possible to have affordable housing for workforce participants. Maybe it's development, developers, I don't know where we need to go, but I, I really feel like we didn't get very far on that topic. And it bothers me because my family's part of that group.
Right, right.
Okay, the coming years, we will be working on that. I haven't already.
I have, I have ideas, but I don't know if they, if they float, you know, the, the part about, you know, the possibility of, of having a, a survey that shows the demand so that we could sell that to a developer, the idea of carving out some land out of the Cascade Heads development and maybe make it available cheaply to incentivize someone, I mean, things like that, but you know, fact is, I don't think we build any units, so. And I know we have small houses or big houses and they, you know, as potentials, but the pricing of the houses seem to be so high that maybe they would never end up being workforce house properties. I just, I, I know a lot of people that are not housed right now, and, and most of it is because of the cost. And the cost is because of availability.
Right, right.
Part of the reason that we have a need for it always because the majority of the people here that need workforce housing aren't paid enough. And we've got to, I think, develop some parcels of land and get some employers in here who can, so that it's not just the, the, it's not just the hospitality industry and Chinook Winds and the medical community, but there is some level of employment in between there that leads to our getting out of the basement of the state of Oregon for employ, employment, average income.
We are a tourist city, and so no matter what you do to add other things, you have a lot of people making beds, and you have a lot of people serving food.
But those people could have an opportunity to
We'd still have them replaced by people making beds and serving food.
That's right, and those people will always need a housing assistant, like the housing that provides economic aid to those people who don't make enough to afford the rent.
We need to look at ways too to bring many of our people who work on Lincoln City can't afford to live here and find ways to draw them back into our community, so these, so they can vote on issues that affect them. And when they live outside of the city, they can't do that. So we have to always be aware that they're there and, and, and keep their, their needs in mind, yeah. The other thing I was going to say too is that I was noticing in the news that Newport last night, the city council, has changed their system development charges to be on a per foot basis that we talked about last time, to help make housing more affordable. And they also are beginning to promote ADUs. And so, you know, we have a lot in common with other communities here in the county and maybe, and I'm not, I know we're already doing this, but perhaps there might be opportunities in the next year or two to see what we can do with, in cooperation with Newport and with other Lincoln County communities to say, develop, have a stronger emphasis on community land trusts that might promote more affordable housing. But I think, let's be creative about this and really try to meet that need, although it's a challenge everyone is facing right now, yeah.
Don't forget though that this job also involves small incremental steps. And just the example is, in the year in review, I'm remembering this thirty unit multifamily development on northeast West Devils Lake Road that we approved after some heated discussion. We listened to Leslie tell her story and approved this one, that, that one thing right there was, was, I think, a significant improvement for the workforce housing question, little bit at a time.
Anything else? I think one thing that I'm proud of as a commissioner is I think we do a really good job when it comes to quasi judicial decisions we have to make that we are very fair about. I take a lot of pride in that.
I'd like to find out for next year how we can bring something up because Patty had a suggestion that we have the Sustainability Committee reactivated, I think. And I think there's plenty of opportunity for educating fifth and sixth graders on how to use the sewer system so that they don't have problems as they do. And the, the city has some great parkland up above the water treatment plant, wildlife area, which I don't think is in a, a park designated area now. It's just land that they acquired so that it would protect the water system. How can we do that and get it on the, on the board so that we can have some of those projects going on in the future?
That piece that you're talking about is a hundred and fifty-six acres out in Lincoln County, and so it's not, wouldn't be, fall under our zoning ordinance, but yes, the city bought that.
It could still be a, an area that kids from the high school could walk and look at and
We actually, the fifth graders have been going out for years, over a decade, and they collect water samples and they do tests on the water, and they, they have tracked a lot of data in that time period. So they are taking advantage of that, and I don't know whether any other ones are now or not, but that's, that was one of the reasons that we used, trying to get grant money to, to purchase the property, was the fact that it is being used already for outdoor education. That's a great idea for, for all of our open spaces.
Anything else? Patty?
Okay, I think we did a great job on the chicken issue myself. You know, I, I think being first, first year commissioner, I think the, the frustration that I have had has been in the, the difficulty to get input from the public and yet stay within the constraints or restrictions of ex parte and communication rules. And I, I'm, so I'm working on ways to get around that. I think, for example, as, as, as Miles mentioned, I, I think that, that these committees that the city has had in the past that have, for whatever reason, lost steam, would be a good way to focus some of the ideas and things, particularly that are coming out of the visioning process. I'm, I remain somewhat concerned that a lot of the great ideas that are coming out of the visioning may get lost, and it'd be nice if we had a way to, at least for some of them, that seem like they don't have to wait for twenty years, that they could really have, they have some momentum to move forward. And I think that the Sustainability Committee might be a place where the public can input into some of those things and carry forward what the visioning has begun, and then that can come back to the planning commission, so work it in that direction. The other thing I would just say, Jeannie, we need a dog park. We had a pretty good, we had a pretty good plan. Deb had a plan all drawn up. We were calling it Deb's Park, so, you know, but I think there, I think that's just been the frustration, has been that there's so many good ideas that are coming up and I don't have, I have yet to see a real clear path.
You want to see something happen?
Toward getting them to move forward, yeah. And the only other thing, which is just as specific, is when we do receive site plans to look at or to approve, we need maps. We need to provide us maps in our packets as best you can because, you know, I don't know, everybody else might know the city inside and out, but I don't. And it's real helpful since we're not supposed to go actually visit the site. We could, you know, have some good Google Earth maps that show us the whole property from different altitudes, so we really get a sense of what it is and what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know you've made that comment in the past, and I thought we were, you know, trying to do better on that. I think, I would encourage any of you, you know, if there's something that you're not seeing in your packet, you can call the staff at any time and, and ask to have something. So, and we can get it out, you know, as soon as we get it, so, get it put together. So please do, you know, let us know, that communication can go both ways. And when you get your packets, if you have questions, you don't have to wait until the meeting. If it's something that you, you need to know in order to complete your review or that you think that everyone would benefit from knowing, then, you know, let us know that too, and we can, we can communicate with you.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Thanks for the chocolate, Deb.
That was, actually, I wanted to mention that candy. Kate and Amanda received this big box from Hawaii from some happy customers there who they haven't even met, but who have been communicating through email and over the phone about their property here or, or what they would like to buy here. And, you know, it's not the first time that their customers have, have, you know, gone to great lengths to, to compliment their service and thank them for their helpfulness in working with, in working through their, their property purchase or development or whatever it is that they need. So, and of course, we don't really accept gifts from people, but in this case, we, we're sharing it with the planning commission, and we share it with the public or the planning commission when that happens. But anyway, we, we are, Richard and I are very aware of, of how much help they provide to the public, and I want to thank them for that also.
They're wonderful.
Thanks, Kate.
All right, so are we going, we can go on to new business?
There was new business.
I'm planning commission training, excuse me. Oh, I'm planning commission training, excuse me.
Bruce, you might want to come down here so you can see.
This, this is, this is planning training, but it's in the spirit of the season.
Clarence?
Yes, sir.
We have a job for you. Take a look at this.
Who's that?
That's George Bildly.
George Bildly?
Yes. He's your new assignment.
Why, a successful businessman who lives in Beverly Hills. He doesn't look like he needs any help.
He's about to. He's about to make a terrible mistake.
Oh.
See for yourself.
Should be about twelve feet long near the door, the whole second floor of the additional retail space. Now, now we've got to get this thing built as soon as possible. I've got some investors coming in to see the place next month, so we've got to get started right away. Cold still lingering, Suzu?
Mr. Bildly, you were going to go to city hall before it closes today.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Mary.
Here's a reduced copy of the blueprints.
Thank you, Suzu. See you in a bit. Well, what are you mean review process? I gotta have this thing built by next month. No, 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 hold on a minute here. Hold on. I'm a resident. Review process. This is crazy. I've got one month to build the addition. I can't, I can't. Hey, George. I was just... George, what's the matter? The planning commission, the architectural commission. There isn't time. I, I... Harry, what, what am I gonna do? What am I supposed to do? George, hey, where are you going? George! God, thank you. Thank you. I've lived and worked in this town for years now and all I want to do is quickly add a second floor. I've gone to all these homes. There's so much bureaucracy. I, I can't. I wish there was no planning department. I wish the gosh darn planning department never existed. Hey. Hey, buddy. You all right? You want me to call an ambulance?
Oh, no thanks. I'm fine. I was just trying to help you.
Come again?
You got your wish, George. There is no planning department.
Hey, how do you know my name?
I know everything about you, George. I'm your guardian angel.
Stay away from me, okay?
Don't be afraid. I was sent here to help you.
Your elevator isn't going all the way to the top, is it, Bob?
Excuse me?
You're a couple of sandwiches short of a picnic. Hey. What's going on here?
You got your wish.
What?
There is no planning department. There never was a planning department. You can build anything you want, anywhere, anytime. No restrictions, no review process.
You need help, buddy.
My name's Clarence. And you're a lucky man, George.
What's Suzu's blueprint? What? Oh, I gotta get back to my store. Where am I? What is this? Dreaming? You're not dreaming. Is this some kind of a joke?
No, George, this is Beverly Hills without any planning or community development.
What happened to Rodeo Drive? And it's impossible. You can't have these kinds of places here. Do you know how much I pay in rent out of my store just a couple of blocks from here? Do you know? Do you know how much the property value would drop? Oh, oh, no, no, no. This can't be real.
Oh, but it is, George. There are no rules or restrictions on what can be built. People can do whatever they want. It's what you wish for. No bureaucracy.
No, no, nothing. This is crazy. You, oh, no. Oh, no, my store. Where's my store?
Oh, George, don't. I don't know if you want to see it.
Where is it? I'm all disoriented. Where's Cannon Drive?
It's right over there.
Hey! What do you think you're doing? That's my lot. I, I paid good money for this lot. You can't have your customers park here.
Not only do my customers park here, but my employees park here too. What are you gonna do about it?
I'll report you.
To who?
Great. That's, that's great.
At least now you can put that second floor in your store without any delays.
I wanted my customers to enjoy the view from the second floor. I wanted big windows. Now, look at this, the place is surrounded. Look here. You can't even see the sky. Say. Where's Suzu? Where's Mary?
They don't work for you anymore.
Clarence, who are you? What is this? Some kind of mind control?
I told you, George, I'm your guardian angel. And you've been given a special gift to see what the city would be like without any planning, without regulation, as if the planning department didn't exist.
I'm having a nightmare, that's all. I, I don't feel so hot. I need to get out of here. What in Sam Hill is that?
Why, that's the Greystone Refinery.
The Greystone Refinery? Where's my street? This is not my neighborhood. Are we on Sunset?
Well, of course.
Well, why does everything look different? It's all a jumbled mess of skyscrapers and houses and factories. Well, where are the neighborhoods? Residential neighborhoods? Where's the business triangle? Isn't there zoning?
Oh, don't be silly, George. There are no zones here. There never were any. People can build whatever they want.
Yes, whatever they want, whatever they want. You said that. But the city is still called Beverly Hills. Now, now, I know my history. It was built by Burton Green back in nineteen six, who hired Wilbur Cook to design the community.
No, George.
And he made it so a lot of the residential streets would be curved so they'd feel more intimate and, and a different type of tree would be planted on each street.
There was no Mr. Cook. There was no plant.
But, but, but the trees, the beautiful trees that were all over the city, what, what happened to them?
They were never planted.
Hey! Hey, what's he doing?
Whatever he wants.
Oh, for God's sake. I've got off the deep end. I, I need to go home. Where's, where's my street? Where, where's my house?
I don't know if you'll get much faith here, George.
Clarence, point me in the right direction, will you? You're supposed to help me. Where's my house? Where is it?
I don't think you'll want to see it.
Clarence, where is it? Tell me. Tell me, Clarence. It's on the same street, three blocks east of here.
There's gotta be an easier way to do this.
Well, the street names are the same, but everything else, oh, for crying out loud. What are all these walls doing right on the sidewalks? You can't see anything. Why are all these buildings so tall? Can't see the sky.
It used to be regulated by setbacks and height restrictions, but now there are none.
Look how fast the cars are going here. There could be an accident. This is supposed to be a resident. People live here, Doc Connick.
It's a bit more dangerous now. Be careful, George.
My house. What's this thing next to my house? Oh, oh, never mind. I'm going to sleep now, Clarence, for a long time so I can wake up from this nightmare. Good night.
Good night, George.
Bruce?
Guns shots.
This used to be such a quiet street. Would everybody please shut up? Mary, why'd you leave the store so early? What's going on here?
George Bildly. Why, you let me go years ago. Business was so slow. I haven't worked for you in years.
All right, very funny. Mary, listen to me. I, I'm not laughing anymore. Do you hear me?
Somebody help me!
Clarence! Clarence! Clarence, take me back. Take me back to the way it was before. Please, Clarence, take me back. I want to go back.
But this is what you want me for.
Oh, for God's sakes, Clarence, you didn't have to take me so literally. Please. This isn't where I live. This isn't Beverly Hills. Everything's ruined. Get me out of this nightmare. Please. Get me out of here. Please. It's daylight.
It's daylight. You okay, George?
Harry! Harry! Suzu's blueprint. Suzu's blueprint. Never been better, Harry.
Happy New Year, George.
Happy New Year, Harry! Happy New Year! Yay! Oh, Beverly Hills! Happy New Year! Hello, hard gauries. Hello, you beautiful mountains and shops. Happy New Year! Happy New Year, Rodeo Drive! Happy New Year! Suzu, how are you feeling, buddy? Mary! Mary!
Hello, Mr. Bildly. Oh, George, stop!
Oh, sorry, Mary.
How did it go at city hall?
Well, we'll have to call the investors and delay their trip a little longer. It's important for the planning and architectural commissions to do their review, to maintain the beauty and quality of this city. Most people take it for granted, the peacefulness, the safety and the unique character that makes us such a special place to live. Is that right, Clarence?
Who's Clarence?
That boy, Clarence.
A few thumbs up, Richard.
This is what happens when you adequately fund a planning department.
Adequately?
So I just thought, you know, it's a parody of It's a Wonderful Life and it seemed appropriate for the season.
Yeah, if you want to see more about It's a Wonderful Life, Theater West is producing a, a radio play version of it later this month.
Right, great.
I was just a little concerned when he started kissing his secretary.
Yeah, the reality has overtaken some of the scenes.
Thank you for sharing that with us. All right. Any reports, further reports and comments from staff?
No, not right now.
Okay. And we do not have a meeting later this month?
Okay, yeah. We don't have a meeting scheduled for the nineteenth. And instead of that, the Imagine Lincoln City Vision Team is meeting on the, on the nineteenth, from six to eight. The next scheduled meeting is for January second, the day after New Year's Day. We have nothing scheduled for that. And if you wouldn't mind, I suggest canceling that meeting.
Commissioners, how do you feel about canceling, canceling the first January meeting? All right? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So then we'll have a meeting on the sixteenth of January will be our next meeting.
Thanks. I have one announcement to make. The Lincoln City Police Facility Project will be having a community engagement meeting on Tuesday, December twelfth, from six to eight p.m. at the community center. And they would like to hear from you to lay the groundwork for planning for the development of the police facility project. And light snacks will be provided. So try to show up, December twelfth, from six to eight p.m. at the community center for that meeting.
Steve?
Yes?
Would there be an opportunity there to talk about the extra land that the police department currently sits on for a, that the city owns so that we could talk about maybe a park being developed concurrently with the...
I'm not sure that would be the focus of the agenda for this meeting because I think this, the new police facility will be built in a different area.
Yeah, but it's all on one parcel.
Actually, actually, Miles is right about that, that this sits at the south end of that parcel that the city owns. And also, the, the Public Works Department is, is on the other side of the wetland, to the east. And the police station will, they're looking at, at having it at the same location, but a different part of the property. To the north is about three and a half acres that we've been talking about as, as a park for that neighborhood. And we have, I've had conversations...